Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
We are called to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you do the prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you bless this time that we have together. God help us as we make decisions for the betterment of our community. Be with each of us. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've noticed there's a trap door under my desk. I think I may get worried. Item four, approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item five, public hearings. There are none tonight. Item six, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson.
We have one tonight, Mr. Sean Keaton.
Mr. Keaton, if you'll come to the mic and tell us your name and your address. Is that, is your mic on? Just so...
I just need to pull it high with your mouth.
Is that better? Is that working? All right. Sean Keaton, I live at 7200 Jones Lane. What I want to talk to you tonight about is on the agenda tonight for new business items A, B, and C. This is the, there's two, three properties on Old Nashville Road. They're all adjoining. And they're wanting to rezone it from RS 40 to R 20. Altogether, this is about 21 acres. And I'm here tonight to urge you to vote against it. So where I live, I live on Jones Lane, but this is, the back of my property runs west and it's only about 200 feet from where this property is. So I'm relatively close to it. But I was noticing, when I looked in the 2040 plan, this property is, it has two zoning designations. One of them is legacy neighborhood. And it says appropriate zonings for that is RS 40 and R 20, which is what they're trying to get it moved to, is R 20. The other part of this property is Zone Transition Corridor. And it says its appropriate zoning is RS 40. So you've got these two zonings, but one of them says RS 40. So I don't know really how you, I don't know, pick and choose which one you're going to use. I know, I mean, I'm a surveyor. I do stuff at the county where I submit stuff there. And anytime we have a conflict like this, we always have to adhere to the more stringent requirement. Next point I'd like to make is, so about last fall, there was one of my neighbors, he was trying to do the same thing, rezone his property. He was actually wanting to rezone it from RS 40 to R 15. And it came to the planning committee and they actually turned him down. And one of the comments, or two comments made. One of the comments was, one of the commissioners said, or board members said, have you, they were asking the developer, they said, have you actually asked any of the neighbors what they think about this? And he said, no. And so I thought maybe he was going to come back and try to, you know, reapply for a different zoning. So I said, well, that's a good idea. Let me go out and I'll just ask the neighbors. So I kind of got together my little survey. Granted, this was property near me. This wasn't this one. But I asked people on, you know, Jones Lane and Old Nashville, actually people that would be right across from this development. And I just went around, I said, should the property, I'm not going to say what it is, but I said, should this property, which is currently RS 40, be allowed to change its current zoning designation from RS 40 to something that would allow for development of smaller lots? I asked, basically it would represent 10 homes or 10 properties. I got 15 signatures and everybody said, no. I didn't find anybody that said yes. I even got, believe it or not, I went down to Pinnock Place. I even got three people to sign it in Pinnock Place. They said they didn't want to be rezoned for smaller stuff. So I was kind of, I was kind of impressed that they signed it. Pinnock Place, that was the other thing I wanted to bring up. At the same meeting, one of the board members that... All right, three minutes? Okay. Three minutes goes fast. All right, anyway. Urge you to vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, anyone else? Thank you, and thank you so much. I usually try to remember to remind everybody they have three minutes and I apologize. We'll try that next time. Public announcements, city events? Mr. Rawls.
Good evening. Just a reminder that we're having the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April the 9th at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. There's going to be food trucks. Obviously, the Easter Bunny is going to be here. And there's going to be a bunch of Easter eggs for all the kids. Keith, if you can go to the next slide, please. This is just a reminder that the City of Fairview is having our annual Independence Day celebration again this year on July the 3rd, which is on a Sunday this year. It'll be from 2:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m., multiple food vendors, fun activities for the kids, and multiple artists performing as well. If you'd like to be a sponsor of this event, please come by City Hall, or you can contact us directly at 615-387-6140. We're also needing a couple more food vendors as well. Keith, can you go to the next? This is just a reminder that the city is excited to announce that we're going to be having the Pork in the Park this year on Saturday, November the 5th. There's going to be multiple barbecue competition there along with fun activities for the kids. And it's just going to be a great day for that. Mayor, I'm going to pass that off to you.
We already have one team in the competition. Derek and I have decided to re-crank the Pork in the Park in this year. It's going to be Pork in the Park the Squickwell. So we're recruiting teams. Entry fee is still the same. I think we have an email address that people can email and get information. And it's buyporkinthepark@gmail.com.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you need information, just email there and we will get back with you. And this year, we're making a donation to the Playground Maintenance Fund. And plus, our plan is to help fund local small nonprofits with the money we get from Pork in the Park. And we will be taking applications for those grants. So email us. Let us know what you need.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask one thing? Can you repeat that phone number for the sponsors for the July 3rd?
Yes, ma'am. It's 615-387-6140, or they can come by City Hall and speak with myself.
Thank you.
Anything else? Staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, I'm presuming you're everybody?
Yes, ma'am. That's, I'll attempt.
Maybe you can play a little song for us before you start.
Sure. I'll be glad to do that. We'll be taking requests as soon as we adjourn. The January 2022 single-family building permits are, were 14. We're low this time of the year. Obviously, we anticipate those numbers to increase in February, March, and April, as they always do for the building season. So no issue there. And then our other building permits are out parcel or associated buildings or remodels, were two for the month. So again, just about where we expect to be. Obviously, the weather's not been super helpful in that area, but those are standard for us, so no issues there. Also, within the Planning Department, and I'll just kind of run down each of these reports for you. But in the Planning Department, we've communicated with Mr. Potter in his office. We're going to apply concerted effort this year to do some cleanup around the city for dilapidated buildings, unkept structures, unkept lots, and that sort of thing. Obviously, we're growing. We're growing in every area, every area of the city geographically. With that growth, the new development that comes in sort of brings to life the properties that need some attention and repair. We understand that. We hope to have an improved set of ordinances and regulations that make that a little more enforceable to move through. Obviously, the penalty question always comes into play on that. But we believe as we move forward and we see the development, we're going to need to put an equal effort into the cleanup of some of those structures. So over the next couple of months, when you see these ordinances and resolutions come before you, the purpose of that is to make sure that we can enforce those cleanups in those areas. We know that there are some in different areas of the city. But our goal is to make sure that every area of the city is as inviting as we can make it. We think this will help us in that effort. So the Planning Department is always busy, but this is an area that we know we need to make some improvements on, and we'll be bringing that to you. The next report I have for you is the Finance Report. I've placed the December financial documents in front of you. As we always do, you have the bank balances. Those bank balances are as of today. The reserve fund balance that you have is for December of 2021. And the operating revenue report and expenditure report are also for December of 2021. That gets us halfway through the year. We'll take that information along with the January information from our financials and move ahead pretty quickly with the amended budget for this year, so we can get into the new budget that starts July 1. These budgets seem to come by, come around a little quicker each year. We understand that, but this is a big year financially for us. Relating to the report itself or the balances that you see, our operating fund is up substantially over this, this time this year, over where it was last year. That's good for us. The result of that will be an increased amount of resurfacing for the year. The resurfacing bid will go out in March. We'll move forward with that. We look to double the resurfacing that we did last year, which is always good for us. So we're, we look forward to reinvesting those dollars back into the community. At the bottom of the page, page one, you'll see, or actually the first page of page two in the document, you'll see where the bond issue money is in the bank. We have a dedicated account for that. That balance is $9,791,272. Obviously, those funds are committed. What we did get was a pleasant surprise in that that fund, that, that account is eligible to earn interest. We only run a foul of interest earned on the bond fund or the receipt of those funds if the interest earned exceeds the interest paid. We're at about 3% interest on the, on the bond issue. As long as the interest earned is less than 3%, we don't run a foul of any taxation issues or other thing. When we put that final budget together, we'll, you'll see two things as a part of that. First will be the capital projects that we know we're going to complete with the bond funds. The second thing we'll do is put together a budget for the interest earned. The reason that's important is, in some projects, and I'll give you an example, we're working on a piece of property to make improvements to Northwest Highway and Highway 96. Signalized intersection there, as we've talked about, realigning the road, improving the, the bridge or the box cover that's out there. There are parts of that work that you don't necessarily want to finance in a bond issue. An example would be a survey, right? That survey work has to be done before you can move forward with the acquisition of property, any design draw and that sort of thing. So anything that are going to be, that's going to be an operational cost, we'll assign the interest earned to those associated costs so that our true bond dollars that we borrow are for capital as much as we can and take the interest earned and pay for those soft costs that you don't necessarily want to finance as a part of the long-term capital project. So you'll have a budget for the, the bond issue money and a separate budget, or budgeted line items for the interest that we recruit as well to make sure that we're actually financing things for 30 years that need to be financed for 30 years as a part of that. So we'll make the best use we can of those, of those interest dollars. But that's where we are on the financial report. I look forward to getting the amended budget on the table so we can move right into the new budget for the year. The Public Works Report, item 8C. This is a little bit of a quiet month for us, obviously, January, December, January, particularly the weather. We had, we did work a significant number of hours during the severe weather events. The snow and ice just doing the best we could to stay ahead of those. Obviously, you stay ahead of them as best you can. But our staff did a really good job. We do still have one vacancy in the Public Works Department. It's advertised on the city's website for a crew member, a position, anyone interested in applying, or if you know someone who may be interested, if you could direct them to the website. That, that position's funded. We really need the help in that department, especially as we get into the spring. And lastly, under 8D, the City Managers Report, just one item for you tonight. I just want to report to you that we are already scheduling equipment deliveries for the playground. We were in communications with the vendor last week. We anticipate that in the next two weeks, we'll start to see the initial delivery of the equipment for the playground. We're working to secure a storage area in the park right now, so we can bring all those in, make sure we get those, get them catalogued, so we can move forward with the construction of the playground. So we're a little ahead of schedule from where we thought we were, would be on deliveries. We look forward to making sure that that, that program in that playground grows a little more smoothly than we thought. So far, we're on the right track. So what I'll have for you tonight, I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of those items you may have.
Are there any questions on any of the reports?
I have two. On the unkept properties, if it's a personal residence, I've been called about a couple and know about a couple. How does that work? I just want people to know.
As far as reporting that?
Well, that and maybe what happens after it's reported.
Depends on the violation, but generally, we'll send a letter to the property owner or the information we have on the property owner. We'll give them a couple of opportunities to clean the property up. If it's exterior, typically it's landscaping, those sorts of things, growth. We'll give them a couple of letters and a couple of opportunities to remediate that. If they don't, the city will go in and do that work and place a lien on that property. If it's a structure that needs to be removed, that's a little more lengthy process, and that's where our ordinances and resolutions or regulations are a little bit weak. We want to improve those to make sure we do add some teeth to being able to get those properties cleaned up.
And the other, as everybody knows, with the weather events, we've had, there are potholes several places. Can you explain the difference between the highway, so that people know, and like our city streets?
Sure. Highway 100, Fairview Boulevard, and Highway 96 are state routes. The state owns, maintains all of, all of Highway 100 and all of 96. That's not the city's property or roadway to repair. I understand Highway 100, especially today, is in really bad shape. And we've gotten several calls on that. The state's aware of that. They had a crew out yesterday. Not only did they have a crew out looking at that, but also the team that's going to be responsible for the widening of Highway 100 was on site as well, and our staff met with them. So the state's aware of that. They're doing some work on that. We've chased our city streets as best we can to make sure we keep those potholes clear, filled. One of the things that the city is doing as a part of that, as you may recall, there's money in the budget this year, and there'll be some carryover money next year for the city to purchase a infrared trailer and a heated asphalt trailer. Our goal is to perform infrared repairs on any potholes on city streets simply because of the cost and longevity of those. An infrared repair has about a 10-year life cycle. Where just a cold mix or cold patch has about a 10-day life cycle. They just, you just fill, you repeatedly fill those holes. So we're looking to invest in the capital that will allow us to make permanent repairs of that on city streets. Highway 100 unfortunately is just out of our control until the state can come out and make some repair on that.
And if there is a pothole on our city streets that someone sees, they can call?
Absolutely. They can call the Public Works Department. The Public Works number that's on the city's website. We have a person there who answers those calls. They'll get that information out to the crew. And they're their best, they'll do the best they can to get out there and make sure they get filled.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item 10, old business. There is none. 11A, new business. First reading of ordinance 22-03. Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022-03. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 6.99 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, Parcel 065.03, located on Old Nashville Road, from RS 40 residential single-family to R 20 residential. Property owner Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'm going to accuse myself from A through C of a client interested in this property.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Does anyone want to speak with the developer? Hi, sir.
Good evening. Timothy Mangram, 7326 Fernville Road. Here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Have you heard the concern of the neighbor?
Well, I come in on the tail end of that, and I was assuming that from hearing Pinnock Place and this, that, and the other, that he was referring to this potential development. And I found it just a slight bit ironic that he has signatures from people across the street that's also living on half-acre lots.
Barring that, his concerns.
That, that's the only part of it I actually, because I did come in, he was already up here speaking when I walked in the door. So I missed a lot of that. So other than that, I'm not sure what his concern, what the concerns were.
About our, our master plan for the future, that it does not necessarily work with what that calls for, for that property? Isn't that correct, Mr. Collins?
I believe that's what was expressed.
Yeah, this, there is ironic. This piece of property has two different, in your land use map, it has two different designations. But there's a lot of property in that area that doesn't fit the designation that's currently there. So there's lots of parts of Fairview, as you probably well know, that was, got a certain designation put on it on the 2040 plan that doesn't conform currently. As you probably know, this property is less than 600 feet from some RN 12, which is 12 units to the acre. And we feel like that, you know, half-acre lots is a good compromise for the City of Fairview.
Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm sorry, did you want to say something? And hearing no other discussion. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
No. You just want to stand there?
Yeah, I think I ought to stay right here.
You don't want to sit down and get back up?
No, unless you want me to.
No, you're good. 11B, first reading of ordinance 22-04. Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022-04. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.19 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, Parcel 065.04, located on Old Nashville Road, from RS 40 residential single-family to R 20 residential. Property owner Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion, any questions of Mr. Mangram? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
No. Item C, first reading of ordinance 22-2022-5. Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022-05. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.19 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, Parcel 065.06, located on Old Nashville Road, from RS 40 residential single-family to R 20 residential. Property owner Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions of the developer? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
No. Item D, is this one still you, Mr. Mangram?
Yes, ma'am.
We should just get you a seat up front. First reading of ordinance 22-2022-6. Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022-06. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 0.31 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, Parcel 145.04, located on Cleveland Lane, from RS 15 residential single-family to C 1 commercial. Property owner, First Federal Bank, applicant Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC, and David Hudgens. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have a question. So this came through planning as an unbuildable lot.
Unbuildable residential lot.
Okay, even better. An unbuildable residential lot.
Yes.
Mr. Collins, can you kind of explain what that means?
It's so, not exactly. I can explain it, but it's not exactly as you have. And there's a, there's an item, the next item on the agenda, item E, first reading of ordinance 2022-07. I'll explain to you how, where we are to unwind this.
Okay.
When this parcel was brought into the city, it was brought in by ordinance number 667, which is referenced in item E on your agenda. The parcel on item D that you're considering is listed in that ordinance as tract 2. Tract 2 is zoned RS 15, and it is deemed a non-buildable lot. The, there's no zoning that is RS 15 non-buildable lot. There's only RS 15. The city council or the Board of Commissioners, when that property was annexed and when that ordinance was read, our tract 2 that you're discussing was zoned RS 15, although it was less than 15,000 square feet. To compensate or to prevent, in theory, that lot from being buildable, that ordinance 666-67 identified the lot as a non-buildable lot. So item D that you currently are considering rezones the parcel from RS 15 to C 1 commercial. That in and of itself does not remove the restriction of the lot being a non-buildable lot. To make the lot be a buildable lot, that restriction has to be removed. So item D would be rezoning the lot from RS 15 to commercial, C 1 commercial. Item E would be to amend ordinance 667 to remove the designation as a non-buildable lot, so long as that lot is commercial. If it is ever, if it ever reverts back to residential, then the non-buildable designation would carry.
So...
So, so if item D passes and it's rezoned from RS 15 to C 1 commercial, it's still a non-buildable lot?
So both D and E would have to pass in order for it to be a buildable lot?
That's correct.
So, but what we're talking about doing is putting a commercial lot in a subdivision, in a residential area, correct? In that residential?
Mayor, the only thing I can answer is it's on the corner of Cleveland, Cleveland Lane and Highway 96, and it backs up. Right now, it's, it's a tract lot of Leverett subdivision.
Okay.
Leverett Meadows subdivision. So you're rezoning this lot from Leverett Meadows at that corner, from RS 15 residential to C 1 commercial.
Well, I guess that was my question. So right now, the lot is in a subdivision.
The property right next door is commercial.
But this lot is in a subdivision, correct, Leverett Meadows?
It, it's a, it's a parcel of Leverett Meadows subdivision.
Okay, that was my question.
Can I, can I add one thing, and Mr. Collins can correct me if I'm wrong. It is my understanding it was only unbuildable, because at the time, there was no such thing as an R15 HUD, which we do or don't have today. So the lot had to be a minimum of 15,000 feet. The foot, the, it wasn't big enough.
Right.
That's why it was deemed unbuildable, because it did not meet that 15,000 square foot threshold.
That's true. I, I've researched this property, and that is exactly the reason why. It has nothing to do with, you can't build on it. It was just, because at that time, as Tim said, it, it didn't meet that subdivision size, lot size.
And it, it does not, this lot does not touch any other lot in Leverett Meadows.
Any other discussion?
Here, I've got a question for Mr. Collins. Does this meet our 2040 comprehensive for the land use?
I believe it does.
The planning commission had some good discussion on that with, it's a transition corridor to the right, the parcels there, there's an HVAC company, there's storage units are a little bit farther to the right picture, and then two parcels up, Highway 96 would be the RM8 Caspian Hills development, so there's a commercial around it and some higher density around it.
So commercial it does. Okay.
Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye.
Item E, first reading of ordinance 2022-07, Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance zero, I'm sorry, 2022-07, an ordinance to amend City of Fairview ordinance 667, tract two, upon rezoning from RS15 to any commercial zoning classification. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Mr. Collins, please remind us again what we have to do here. So this has to be, these both have to be approved in order for the lot to be buildable.
Only one has to be approved for it to be, the first ordinance that was just, or just passed, is not required for it to be buildable, it can be zone commercial. The item you have before you, item E, is what would require that. Again, ordinance 667, regardless of zoning, because there is no RS15 non-buildable lot zoning, it's RS15 or it's not, that, that ordinance paragraphs this lot to be a non-buildable lot. The way that ordinance is written, the non-buildable lot designation carries, meaning if item D were to pass, and the lot was rezoned from RS15 to commercial, or C1, commercial, the staff would still not be able to issue any building permits on that lot, because ordinance 667 designates that lot as a non-buildable lot. The item that you have before you removes the non-buildable lot designation at any time, and so long as that corner or that lot is commercial of any zoning type. If it is ever not commercial, the non-buildable lot designation would carry with, with any residential zoning classification.
That's about as clear as mud. That's about as you can do.
I'll refer you to ordinance 667. It took me, it took me a day and a half to unwind it, I apologize.
So, if any time in the future, this property is rezoned to something other than commercial C1, it would revert back to being an unbuildable lot?
It would, it would revert back to unbuildable lot if it's ever any designation other than commercial. Not specifically C1, but any commercial zoning classification.
So if this property ever reverts back to anything other than commercial, then it's, once again, an unbuildable lot?
That's correct.
What if there's a building on it?
There's not.
Okay, I must not quit asking questions, because I'm just muddying the waters even more for myself.
I assume you mean, I assume your question would be, if it's rezoned to commercial, there's a commercial building built on the lot, and then it's rezoned to residential, that'd be non-conforming use. We can't unbuild?
Right.
A, a structure that will be on there.
You see my confusion?
Right.
Okay, I think I actually understand. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye.
Thank you for all of your time.
Item F, resolution 06-22, Vice Mayor.
Resolution 06-22, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent, and approving a plan of services Diamond Crest at Fairview.
Do I hear a motion? Hearing no motion?
Mayor, if I could just ask you a question. Just traditionally, I guess there's no zoning reference in that resolution. Traditionally, we'd see another ordinance with the, with the zoning, is that correct? Or is it just a request for annexation? Does that question make sense?
I think it's a question for a public hearing to discuss annexation.
But traditionally, there'd be another line item. When it came through the planning commission, it was asking for an R15 zoning designation, so I was just trying to confirm if this resolution does not list the zoning, is there another, should there be another line item referencing the zoning?
No, sir, the public hearing would be just to hear this. Once we get to the meeting where there's a public hearing, you're correct, there'll be a public hearing, and then a subsequent vote. That's when the second item would be, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm used to seeing two consistently on both readings, the first and the second, usually.
So with this annexation, it would be annexed to RS40 then?
That's my question, because the resolution doesn't reference the zoning.
I think this is a public hearing. Hello, sir?
How are you? My name's Matthew Nicholas, I'm the developer for this proposed community, Paramount Imperial Communities, LLC. Open to answering any questions. We've submitted this upon recommendation of the planning commission at the reading on 9/14/2021.
I think this, I think this resolution is just to post that we're having a public hearing, so the neighbors in the community will know that it's being proposed to be annexed.
Okay.
So, but thank you.
I'm just a little confused as to what we're even looking at, because there's no information.
The zoning is indicated on the last page with the map. It is not in the verbiage of the resolution itself, though.
Yeah, it's on that map. But just any other time we've had an annexation with the zoning request, there's been two items, and I was just, didn't know if that needed to be added, if this was capturing both with this initial reading, so. So the intent is for the R15.
I believe RS15, yes.
So this is the resolution to have a public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to approve for a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item F. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item G, resolution 04-22, Vice Mayor.
Resolution 04-22, a resolution requesting the Fairview, Tennessee municipal election to be held in conjunction with the November 8, 2022 presidential election.
Mayor, just as an oversight, that, that'd be the, the state elections, the federal elections, there's no, that's just a, that's just a typo.
Thank you. So do we need to amend that resolution?
You could just, it could just be the general election.
Could you explain this a little bit?
Yes, so, every, at every election that the city has, the city, unless there's a special election, the city holds its elections in conjunction with state and federal elections on the same day, typically known as election day. I know that sounds elementary, but there are some elections that are not on election day. County, county elections, as an example, judge race, judge's seat is not on election day. So we hold municipal elections on the same ballot, on the same election, as the state and federal elections. Obviously, we have the mayor's seat and two BOC seats up this year. Those items will be on the same ballot, on the same election date, as the state and federal elections, and that's the resolution you have before you. We take this information, send it to the liaison commission, they include this information on those ballots.
So do we have to do this every time?
We do.
Okay, that, that's what I was, that's what I was asking, is?
We, we do.
So we have to do this every time there's an election?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve with the change of presidential election to, would you say, general election, right?
Yes.
Of the verbiage.
So, resolution 04-22 is a resolution requesting the Fairview, Tennessee municipal election be held in conjunction with the November the 8, 2022 general election. And Commissioner Lucas has made a motion to pass that, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye.
Communications from the mayor and commissioners, Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I know the, the high school wrestling team has the dual state championships, really defend their state championship this weekend, so best of luck to them. And the both basketball teams, as they kind of wrap up the season, having some great seasons, so best of luck to them. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Best of luck to all the teams. Our, our teams have just been killing it lately. They've, they're doing such a great job, winning state titles and World Series and all kinds of things, so I'm just excited about the success for them. And in light of the situation that happened with Deputy Chandler Rowe this morning, I just want to, it always reminds me how our officers can easily put themselves in, you know, harm's way, and I just want to thank them for, you know, how they serve and protect us every night and day. And just help keep Fairview beautiful, just pick up the trash and don't throw it out. Thank you.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, I want to second that as well. Our prayers are going out tonight for the Williamson County Sheriff's Department and the deputy that was shot this morning, and to all law enforcement across the country, if we can please pray for them and their families. Wanted to give the BOC just a quick update from the Park Operational Plan Committee. We, we have had the joy of having the Friends of Booby Nature Park come and present to us, as well, as well as the American Legion. Keith Paisley and Mr. Collins came and presented on behalf of the city. And we also had the park managers for Beaman and Percy Warner Park present this Tuesday. So we're trying to just gain as much information about our current status of the parks here in the city of Fairview, and then some of the best practices, not only here in Williamson County, but across the country. And we've got a lot of great information. We should be presenting something here pretty soon to the, the BOC. I would say within the next meeting or two, just some suggestions and so forth, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to also remind people, we're going to get apparently some pretty good ice tonight, so be safe. Look out for your neighbors. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I want to say that for people who do not know, I work for the Meals on Wheels program, and we have lots of openings for lots of people that we can feed. I think right now, we're serving 35 homebound elderly, and there's so many more spots, and so if you know people that might be able to benefit from that, let us know, because it's great, I promise. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
And we're adjourned.